Lord heavenly father, we thank you that we're able to gather here, Lord. Lord, as we're in the holiday season, Lord, I pray for those that have a hard time through the holiday season, Lord, whether they lost a mother, a father, a spouse, or a son or daughter, Lord, pray that you can be able to comfort them, Lord. Lord, we're also getting ready to celebrate the birth of Jesus, Lord. Thank you for sending him into the world, not to condemn the world, but that the world to him might be saved, Lord. Please help us and guide us through this meeting, Lord. Your name I pray.
Amen. Officer Alkins, can you lead us in your pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll call this meeting St. Albans City Council to order for Monday, December 1st, 2025. Praise and recognition, please.
I got one.
Who said that?
I did.
Okay, Councilman Knight.
It's a thanks to the St. Albans High School Boys Basketball Team for sponsoring the buses for the hayrides in, uh, in thank Canal County for the school, providing the school buses.
Very good.
Yes, sir.
I just, it's a recognition, we didn't do this last time, that's my fault, I forgot to even acknowledge it, but I just wanted to give, I don't know if we need to do a moment of silence, let's move on, but we had a long time, uh, councilwoman, uh, former vice mayor, uh, pass away a couple of weeks ago, Patty Chandler, uh, she's obviously in a better place with Eddie now, but I felt, uh, that we needed to at least address that and address all the good that she did for our community.
She's up there telling Eddie what to do right now, buddy. Ain't no doubt.
She never stops.
Yes, sir. Councilman Rutter.
Two things, first off, uh, Herman Hardl has pointed out that, credit to Herman first off for being probably the most active citizen in the city of St. Albans.
I agree.
Outside of that, he was pointing out the, the recognition for Andy Eads and the public works for the sidewalk repairs that were done on 2700 block of Roosevelt Avenue. So, good job on all the folks for the Public Works Department and councilmen for, for getting that done. And I point out Herman because that, he doesn't live in Eddie at all.
Right.
It's not his, it's not his neighborhood, so he's just out when he sees something, he, he helps out, so credit to him on that. And then, uh, credit to council for, since 2017, most I've ever been around for Festival of Lights and Kevin, oh, they're not the Festival of Lights. I'm sorry, they, they're always begging and asking for that, so last, or on Friday was a huge turnout for council.
Five or six of us, yeah.
I think six, and you were the seventh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, really a good turnout, so really credit on that, on that this year, so good job, guys.
Very good. Any other praise or recognition?
That's the one I was gonna talk about.
I, I wanna, I wanna praise Brian Morrison with Parks and Rec. You know, they did a display, light display for the fallen miner, uh, Steve Lipskin, I think was his name, but also for all fallen miners. But then he came back after the National Guardsman lost her life, all right, and did a display and it's up there now, so I wanted to recognize, uh, Brian Morrison for, for the work that he does on developing and, and, uh, making those displays.
Yeah, he started doing that about four years ago, I think, the guy that used to do it got unable and then, they've really gotten good at it.
Yeah, and technology has helped.
Yeah, yeah, but just their ability, the first ones, and I don't mean it's bad, but the first one seemed a little sloppy, but now that they're, they're really doing good work.
They do excellent work.
Sure, I got one more there.
Yes, sir.
Sir, I'd like to thank the city also for not being able, I mean, not being afraid to show their faith. I appreciate the city lights, uh, showing, not being afraid to show the nativity scene, and also that we open up the city council with a prayer every time, you know, everybody always says separation in church and state, but I think if we humble ourselves and pray to God, we're only going to be blessed.
Yeah, separation church and state wasn't meant to be like that, but anyway, I'm not getting into-
You always, you always hear brought up all the time.
I'm not getting into that conversation, sir. Any other praise and recognition?
Public Works, they go unnoticed this time of year, but they put the lights up on the telephone poles and-
Yes.
Down Sixth Avenue, Canal Town.
Walnut Street.
Walnut Street. They did a good job this year.
Very good. Got a text today from my sister-in-law that, how much she appreciated the leaf pickup. I mean, not every community does that, so. All right, approval minutes from City Council, November 17th, 2025. Questions or changes? All in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Old business, update on lease agreement between City of St. Albans Canal County Board of Education regarding the property formerly known as McKinley Middle School, I will start here. Uh, I believe that the concerns that we have addressed in the last meeting, uh, has been addressed by the Board of Education. Go ahead, Mark.
Yes, sir, uh, we looked at the lease there and it's, the only concerns we had was the liability for the city in case something goes wrong. And so, I asked the Board of Education if we could add the Canal County Board of Education, put it in the contract, in lease, that they would also be a named insured under our policy for those premises. And that's what our insurance agent suggested, because he says the insurance company won't do it unless it's in the lease, so they're willing to do that. We have on our general commercial liability policy for property damage up to a half million dollars. I asked her to limit our exposure for property damage to a half million dollars. They said no, they said they require a million dollars. So, our next step is to get our agent to find out what it would cost for us to increase our liability for those premises to a million dollars on property damage. And I don't have the price on that yet, we just, we just got this back from the Board of Education today at 2:30, so, um, that's where it stands, so we just need to see how much it's gonna cost the city to increase coverage to a million dollars on property damage.
Hopefully, we can get this resolved by the next meeting or the first meeting in January.
Yes, sir. We need a motion table.
Well, it's just a note.
It's just a note thing.
Yeah. I could put it on the next agenda.
Yeah. All right, uh, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Counselor, not councilman. All right, new business, resolution adopting SAPD operational policy and procedures regarding training.
Same.
Questions or discussion? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I realize I'm new at this, but on this resolution that you're, hold on here, uh, now you're talking about the whole thing in this packet, that includes up to and including the, the LPS's training, as well as the physical fitness policy, is that correct?
It is correct.
So, you're combining the two together?
But the old, uh, the established officers are grandfathered in.
Okay, that doesn't say that on here, I don't know if that needs to be put in here?
Well, it says effective date, 1/20, uh, 1, uh, 1/2026, so anybody that was hired beforehand, uh, is, is grandfathered in.
You can assume that, but I'm saying, should it be, you know, and I asked the counselor, should it be put in there?
I, uh, and that's what the chief asked me about this, and that's one of the things he said, is can we enforce this against officers who've been there 15 years? And I told him, I said, well, I would encourage them to abide by it, but if it comes, push comes to shove, I think you lose on that, and so I think you do have to grandfather them in.
So, it's based on any new hires after 1, 1/2026?
Well, there's been nothing to be worried to indicate that, so that there's no misconception as to if they're covered or not covered, or if all of that or not.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm gonna say one thing, okay? Now, I'm 66 years old, I'm fat now, so, all right, but I was looking in here at the standards, all right, and I'm not gonna get down and do it today, all right, but I promise you right now, I could do 10 pushups and 16 situps. And if we have an officer, you know-
16 minutes?
10 situp, I mean, pushups and 16 situps.
16.
All right, um, that's 16 and above, we don't have any officers 16 and above, I don't believe, but I think, and, and we're gonna grandfather the present force already in, okay? All right, um, but, you know, I watch, man, I gotta be careful how I word this, but I watch the fire department, when it's 95 degrees out, climbing ladders over here in full gear, getting on roofs.
Yeah, but we're talking about cops, Mayor, not firemen. We're talking about real work.
But, but-
Not refiring or he runs.
But I, you know, an argument for not being able to grandfather them, which we're going to, okay, because is, are they gonna be able to perform their duties and save lives to the best of their ability? That, you know, that, that's what I say, but, you know, uh, the counselor has spoken, uh, we will grandfather any present employee in, uh, so, Councilman Rutter, did you want to say something?
Do you feel that that needs to be written as in writ man?
We, no, we can put it in the minutes of today's meeting and because what we want is a clean document-
Right.
-going forward, so every, any officer hired after January 1, 26 knows, this is what he's gonna have to abide by through his career. So, um, and I appreciate the, the grandfather in, as long as we have it documented somewhere, um, and quite frankly, it'd be nice to get some of these younger officers who have only been there a few years to say, hey, I'm willing to do it, and sign up and say, I don't need to be grandfathered, I'm, I'm just a father.
Yeah.
But, but you can't, you can't, you can't put a new, that the guy who has committed his career to it for 10, 15 years, and all of a sudden changed the rules, can't do it.
Councilman Farrell.
Look, are we playing on grandfathering, on the whole, all the in-service hires and everything?
They, some of these things are already in effect where they have to do certain things, they are still gonna abide by the old rules. These are basically for the new rules.
And, and basically, the new rules are the physical fitness part, am I correct?
Right, well, the, the, when it comes to the in-service training and stuff like that, um, that's set up by the state of West Virginia, we have to follow and abide by that.
Okay.
So, that's, you know, it becomes back in the day when you were a supervisor, you just had to get 16 hours of in-service. Now, you have to have 16 annual hours, plus an additional eight hours of supervisory. Okay? So, the, now, the only thing that's being grandfathered in is the physical fitness.
Okay.
I'm the oldest police officer there, 51-year-old, and the 12 pushups in a minute and 19 situps in a minute with a 16 30 mile an hour runs, it's kinda funny to me.
You'd struggle.
No. No.
I was wondering if the in-service, sorry, if they're bothering you, contest right now?
We could have a contest between chief and captain.
I think Mayor's wants to, he can do it.
I said, I'm not doing it tonight, but I could. Now, I don't know about the 17-minute mile, but, you know, mile and a half run, but anyway.
I'll tell you what used to get most people in the Coast Guard was the body fat percentage, they used to get more people than physical fitness.
Yeah, well, BMI is good and bad, both, you know, so. Anyway, any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm still on, I'm gonna get here, okay? Have I discussed it with the assistant chief?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, as well as I spoke with the chief today, one of the issues is on page three or four down on X and X, if this officer, or a officer, under this guideline, gets to where he can't meet those requirements, I, I realize it says here that the chief will designate a, say, he can't make the run, he's done everything he can do, he just can't, he just don't have it anymore to make the run, it says that the chief can substitute a alternative, uh, type exercise or an event. Now, with that being said, I, I just, it's just my professional opinion, uh, personal opinion, I guess, at this point, would be is I think that the chief would need to be taken out of that and seem some kind of committee or something, so it's not, you don't want it to be arbitrary, you want it to be completely transparent.
Well, we can't trust the chief to do the right thing, I don't see why.
Well, I understand.
Well, I'm not saying this because I mean, it's any chief.
The way he's saying is, if he doesn't like somebody, he could say, no, we're gonna do it this way or whatever, but I, I understand what he's, he says, and I appreciate where he's coming from with that, um, but I also think that-
Because I would think-
As upper echelon there, we all have an input on that. I have an input, Lieutenant Perry, who is SRT commander, is one of the oldest guys in this department too, and he absolutely burns up on the PT test, he beats a lot of guys as well. It wouldn't be like, we, we hold each other accountable for, for everything, and it wouldn't be like, I wouldn't say, well, you know, Chief Bass said we're gonna do this, what's this doing? I would, I'm not one of the, to go along and get along with that guy. I would say, you know, you're wrong, it needs to be fair, and so would other officers, so that would be it all.
Well, I guess what I was trying to say, it's not trying to pick on the chief or you or the guys, it's just, if you're gonna substitute an exercise for something, maybe have something that indicates that you need the, a doctor or a medical team to look and say, okay, here's his limitations, let's set something up for the limitations that he has if you're gonna test it, not just-
Well, it says, "In the event of permanent injury documented by medical evidence, precluding officers from performing all or any part of the designated physical fitness evaluation, a task-specific alternative test will be offered." Now, you could have, uh, a torn, uh, rotator cuff, all right, so they'll give you an option for the, uh, pushups, all right? You might have, uh-
I think this question, though, is, is the next sentence, right after what you just read, where it says, "Chief of Police, designated by the Chief of Police," he's asking if maybe, should it be more than just a single individual? I think is what it's-
Well, I, I mean, you, you know, I don't put people in a position, and I hope council doesn't put people in a position, thinking that they're going to be biased one way or the other. I think that they will be fair, I think Philip Bass is very fair in, in his choices and decision-making, uh, but-
I would agree to that, and, and I don't, I don't really have a strong opinion on this particular piece one way or another, but we will not always be council and, and Philip Bass will not always be chief.
Yeah, I wanna make a-
And the mayor after you will appoint somebody as well, and we don't know who that could be, so I, I don't mean that you're wrong on that, I just, this will go past that.
I'm not after the chief, I'm not saying nothing against the chief or, or the individual, I'm not naming an individual, that's not my, my position here at all.
Let me ask you, to the police department, do you all feel, where do you stand on, does somebody else need it included in that? Should, should the assistant chief, should the SRT, should there be another individual there to work with the chief in that, or is it?
Me personally, I think the chief can make the decision on it, because I, and I know, um, I worked with Bass for 19 years now, and-
Again, I mean beyond Bass.
We've argued up and down against things, but, I mean, it's never been, he's never showed any kind of biasness or whatever.
I mean, beyond, just, just as far as-
Oh, I would think that the chief of police, who's, you know-
Agreed.
-in charge of our police department, which-
Hopefully, they're fired if not.
Yeah.
Whomever they are.
Whomever the chief may be, I would think that would be his decision.
Councilman Winnington, I think what, uh, your concern is because it's the chief, whoever you put in there, you still have a concern, are they gonna be fair, or are they gonna be politically-
Has nothing to do with this group, probably, I know all these guys, but I like all these guys, I'm just saying for future-
But it's, it's set up where if somebody thinks that they are being unfairly treated by the chief in that, they can file agreements with civil service.
With civil service, yeah, that's why we're-
Yeah, the grievance process already involved, yeah.
Yes, and there's the civil service.
But you, you also said, though, that you, you have, you-
Changed it.
-will be part of the discussion in that.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be the chief's final decision, it's like, who do we send to, the detective bureau, or who sends who to him did it?
Right.
It's the chief's final decision, but he comes and asks our input on it.
Right.
And, you know, I mean, it was like that with, you know, Chief Gilbert, like, it was a constant thing with him, he would ask our input. Chief Crawford, same thing, Chief Matthews, they would ask the input of it, and, and we would get it, so, but, I mean, all the ones that were, you know, called on the chief, but-
All right. Any other questions or discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor of approving the operational policy and procedures for SAPD, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. All right, uh, request approval to observe Christmas Eve holidays, half-day, December 24th, 2025, all-day, December 24th, 2026, and observe New Year's Eve holidays, half-day, December 31st, 31st, 2025, and 2026 for City MUC employees. Setting dates now for the 2026 calendar year, allow scheduling for police, fire, trash collection, and payroll. And one other thing I wanna say, why it started with justice and it's carried over to, uh, Governor Morrison, they wait till the last minute to give a half-day off. We can't do that. So, if we go ahead and approve them, then we're in good shape.
I'm making a motion to accept.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Yes.
And I, I've read this like 19 times, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, but-
Are we, are we doing a half-day for Christmas Eve this year?
Yes.
And a full day for Christmas Eve next year?
Yes.
Because Christmas Eve next year-
Next year is on a Thursday.
This year, yeah, this, when we did the calendar year last year, we tried to pre-impact what we think at the time the governor was going to do, because he's really, you know, and with Christmas Day falling on Thursday, we figured that he's gonna give everybody Friday off. Val has to turn her payroll in, too. John Boy has to set the trash service, the police at fire have to settle their holiday schedules. So, we already are getting a full day.
I'm just asking the difference of why a half-day this year-
Because we're already getting a full day, the 26th. If you wanna give us three days, hey, I want four, but the state is already giving a half-a-day Christmas Eve. Our code says council has to vote to change anything on the holiday schedule that's not set by state code. So, that's why I did a half-a-day for this Christmas Eve, because the state is doing that.
Adam, feel free, nobody, to make a second if you don't want to, but I'm, I wanna make an amendment to give a full day on Christmas Eve, instead of a half-day.
I'll take it. Bill will have to rescind his motion, how that would work with the amendment, right? Well, Bill's the one who made the motion, well-
Well, you have to rescind it.
Okay, you wanna rescind, ask him to rescind it, so, there you go.
I just think that-
Hey, I'm not, I'm, I'm with you.
I, I, I'd like to change that to give a full day on Christmas Eve, rather than a half-day on Christmas Eve for this year. Everything else stays the same.
One thing you gotta understand is if we have two days in the same week-
And that'll be three.
That'll be three holidays in one week.
Okay, agreed. Cause the 26th is-
See, the 24th is a Wednesday, the 25th is a Thursday, the 26th is a Friday, and that's why we vote, so we, everybody have a long weekend. And if anybody wanted to take Christmas Eve off, they could schedule a vacation.
All right, I, I-
I'll, I'll unrescind.
Yeah, I-
It gets confusing.
It did, and as I was seeing it, it was like, man, what am I doing? Sorry, guys.
That's why it's like a full day in 2026, that's against the law.
I thought maybe your money didn't swing it, I didn't know.
I missed that, that point there, thank you.
Yeah, in 2026, because of the date falls on it, it's a full day.
Right.
Any other questions or discussions? All right, uh, all in favor of, uh, Councilman Knight's, uh, motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. No ordinance, uh, suggested ordinance issues, no ordinances first reading, no ordinances second reading. One thing I wanna say about ordinances, uh, what was I looking at today that we're gonna have to make a change on? I don't know.
We're gonna combine the one that we, about, uh, about where the trailers and-
That, that's Sonic P and Z.
All right.
It's gotta go to P and Z again.
Right.
Yeah, that's not an ordinance yet.
Okay.
All right, uh, what, what, I was thinking of something as I was looking through all the ordinances, but I'll get back with you on that.
Yeah, and we're gonna, you know, Bobby's been out of town, Joey's been out of town, we're gonna have a meeting, get all of that-
Yeah.
-going very soon.
Okay, all right. Finance Committee report recommendations, Councilman Catless.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, motion for approval of payment of current invoices in amount of $25,773.63.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Uh, approval of demolition of property located at 2843 McCorkle Avenue in amount of $44,000 to be paid from line item 409-459-65, demolition is contingent upon the city obtaining the ownership.
Is that Del Rancho?
That is correct, yeah, that is Del Rancho, correct, yes.
All right, we got a motion and second, any questions or discussion?
This discussion, not, there's not really another place to ask about it, does the Land Reuse Agency, will this fall under that, or?
No, because we have not found enough people to be on it yet.
Okay.
Hey, I've got positions on the MUC board, I got positions-
I get it.
St. Albans, you know, people wanna get out on Facebook and complain, but they sure don't wanna fill the slot, so, but we, it will stay with the city, and hopefully, this month, I'll be able to fill that, and starting next month, anything that is brought in goes to the Land Reuse Agency.
With this particular one, let's, because this is, and I, I love it, and I'm all for it, but this is right into the entrance of our city, but let's make sure we do something.
We've got, we've, we've got some ideas.
Yeah.
Okay.
They got their eyes shut anyway when you go to Jeff's.
But I want, when they're coming out of Jeff's, getting something pretty to look at.
That's been a long time, long memories, a lot of issues, yes.
Used to be good food right there, that restaurant that was-
There's that radio station there.
Yeah. All right, any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
We have motion for approval to upgrade the city's website in the amount not to exceed $4,900 with monthly payments spread evenly across six months, paid to Encana Industries from line item 409-220.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I have a question.
Oh, yes.
And, and, anyway, bottom line is, I don't know who Encana is, but say that-
Tony Roma.
Okay, okay, never mind, I'm good.
Okay. All right.
Tony, Tony, he was there for the meeting.
Yeah, Tony, Tony approached me about this, and he's gonna bleed some, blend some AI in based on our meetings and our minutes and our agenda, it's not gonna be wild, crazy AI- It's not gonna be wild, crazy A I, but we'll be on the cutting edge.
And it'll also update what we currently have, which Encarna's who has been doing.
Yeah.
Who set everything up originally, but that was years ago, four, five years ago, even more than that maybe. So it, it does need four or five years in digital worlds.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, after the initial upgrade is paid off, it's twenty-three hundred a month or something like that from, yeah, goes up a little bit than what we're paying now, so.
What I thought was neat also, the, you know, the, the realm of this, I'm gonna go outside, correct me if I'm wrong, like the St. Albans vicinity, right? Like everything that you go to search is related to St. Albans and not.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be.
And the increases for an additional service that is provided with this.
Yes, yes. All right, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Letters and reports, uh, do you have anything, Councilman Knight?
Yes, uh, from the festival lights. Uh, the walkthrough, first night had four and thirty-nine people come through. Hay rides, it was eight hundred and sixty-three people. The cars through the first weekend was twelve hundred and ninety-nine, and visitors to Santa House was five hundred and twenty-eight. So everything's off to a great start.
Excellent, excellent. Um, it's beautiful. They do a great job.
Councilman Kim and I were talking today about the, we both live and have for most, on Vine Street or right near in that area, and how Santa House has so, down at roadside has so significantly helped the travel, the traffic situation on Valley Pike Vine, even on the Canal Terrace. That's been a good.
That was a very good idea. All right, uh, any other letters or reports? Uh, yes.
Christmas, all the stuff this weekend, December sixth.
Oh, gosh, yeah, I was gonna do that on announcements, but.
Go ahead.
We're closing Old Main down at two thirty. Christmas market on Old Main's from four to seven. Six o'clock is the tree lighting combined with storefronts lighting there. Storefronts at six o'clock, right? And should reopen about between seven-thirty and eight. We're having Saint Francis Choir sing. Some of the dance studios are gonna be performing. Uh, so let's just hope for good weather and it'll be a great turnout. Uh, Saturday, huh, three o'clock is the parade, Christmas parade. Uh, the luminaries will start at dark, but if anybody wants to volunteer as a individual, as a group, or as a family, the more we have lit, the better, more spectacular it is. Then the boat parade's gonna be at six-thirty over on Canal River, starting at Mouth of the Coal, going up, past roadside, circling back around. Anything else I'm forgetting?
The market on Main Street, did you say that?
That's Friday night.
Or, or, yeah.
Forty-seven. Yeah, yeah. All right, um.
Wake up, Patty.
Next week, uh, school basketball's starting up. Um, Hayes opens up December tenth, boys and girls. Um, High School Girls open up December ninth. These are the home openers, December ninth at home. And our Boys open up December sixteenth at home at High School, so that's all coming up.
Very cool.
I got one, two, real quick.
Yes.
Uh, hopefully, I don't think this will compete against the girls' basketball game time-wise. It was early enough. December ninth is the business after-hours at the Train Depot. Uh, that's always a very well-attended and, and really good business after, and very fam, uh, family-friendly. Uh, the train people will be there and have a model train going and all that. Very, very neat, uh, thing to go see. I don't know the times yet, uh, but the thirteenth, uh, there is the home tour going on in the city.
Oh, that's right.
Um, I don't know the details. This probably made, probably an interest besides Charlie and I. Uh, the Masonic Lodge is included in it this year for the first time, and so.
Well, I thought the historic home tour was the fifth or sixth?
Thirteenth.
Okay.
So they, the parade, you got plus the parade. Um, so I will send out a text when the times are, but that's, uh, should be a pretty good event. Patty, Patty works hard on that one as well.
One thing I do want to say about the parade the last few years, it's gone down Sixth Avenue, up Third and up Main and Old Main. It's not. It's going straight down to the loop from, on Sixth Avenue this year.
Well, it ain't going up too many.
Yeah, not going up too there. Yeah.
Man, also, uh, the thirteenth, Councilman Perry, maybe look at a calendar. The thirteenth is the Winter Fest at Roadside from three to six o'clock as well. So the parks have a little thing for vendors and such going on down at Roadside.
Very good. All right. Any other, uh, we got Public Works Committee Wednesday, December thirtieth, eight AM at City Garage. Finance Committee Monday, December eighth, four-thirty PM in the M U C conference room. City Council Monday, December fifteenth, at six-thirty PM in council chambers. And that means that M U C will be December sixteenth, I think.
Yeah, it is.
Uh, that Tuesday. Yeah, third Tuesday. I want to make sure.
That'll be on the next.
Yeah, any other announcements? All right, any resident wishing to address counsel may step up to the podium. Uh, state your name, your address. You got five minutes to speak your piece. With no parent public forum, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say bye.